In recent times, so let's see. Roll call please.
Darren.
Here.
Thering.
Here.
Squerderydow.
Here.
Lapp.
Here.
Shingles.
Here.
Buckley.
Here.
Labell.
Here.
And Albert.
Here.
Carolyn's here.
Okay, thank you. So we have our agenda for tonight. It's a relatively short agenda, a couple of business items. Is there anything else that needs to be on tonight's agenda that anyone is aware of? Now to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
So motion by Labell, second by Darren to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. Next item is the approval of the minutes from January 18th. That was our last meeting over here. Any corrections to the January 18th minutes? I thought they were an accurate representation of the meeting that I remember sitting through.
Motion to approve minutes from January 18th.
Support. So motion by Labell, second by Shingles, is there? To approve the minutes of January 18th. Any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So next item is correspondence, board reports and presentations. First item is Commissioner Thering, updates for Board of Trustees.
Okay, to update you on the conversations on the sidewalk and pathways that we had at our last meeting. I did bring it up to the Board at the January 26th meeting. We had, I thought, a nice start of discussion. And based on that discussion, other Board members had interest in continuing the conversation as well. So as a result, Mr. Nanny at an April trustee meeting will be giving us, it's a Union Township sidewalk activities, past, present and future presentation. So if anybody has questions that maybe they'd like me to ask Mr. Nanny, or even better yet, email your questions to Mr. Nanny beforehand and he would have the opportunity to possibly have the answer from him during his presentation. So that was a great discussion we had and I'm kind of looking forward to Mr. Nanny's presentation in April. And that is all I have this time.
Any questions for Commissioner Thering on board related items? Okay, thank you. Let's see, next item is Buckley, updates from zoning board of appeals.
We did meet last month for the zoning board of appeals. We had one variance request that was on the docket for review. It was actually a postponement from a previous meeting. So this was the second time that we were reviewing it. It was a request on Brewfield Road for a variance, a setback variance for the construction of a small building that was actually approved at that meeting. There was no additional agenda items for that meeting. I'm not sure if we have anything coming up for the next month or not. Nothing yet.
So you, that was approved then?
It was approved. There was one dissent and the rest approved, but it was a, it was an issue of having a cement pad in a location that was within the setback and the applicant wanted to build on that site. And there are some greater concerns that were expressed for the remainder of this site that was deemed, I don't know, less than, I suppose, less than convenient for an alternative construction site.
Okay. Any questions for Commissioner Buckley, ZBA items? Okay, thank you. And then the last one that's listed is Commissioner Darren, updates from sidewalks and pathways.
And we have had nothing new, other than our joint meeting that we had. That was the last meeting for sidewalks.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Any other presentations that anyone is aware of? Well, it's not a presentation, but I will, I guess I'll do it here rather than wait till the end of the meeting. Just a reminder, you got an email not too long ago from Peter, I think actually a couple of them, about it's training season coming up, planning and zoning training. There's a variety of workshops. Some of them are online, some of them are in person. A lot of them are in March. So if you're interested in any of them, let Peter know and I'll get you registered. Last year, I did the risk management one, which was online and it's online again. I'd recommend that one. It's actually, it was a good discussion. There's one on zoning, the zoning ordinance A to Z, okay? And then some others. So have a look at that and give some thought to participate. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is really, again, I don't know where it'd go, but, and it's not my desire to erase him from the history of the thing, but Alex is still listed on our roster and not only here, but also on our website. And in particular on the website, I would think we would want to let it be known that we have at least one vacancy. So I would suggest updating that. Okay. So at this point is public comment. So if there's anyone who would like to address the planning commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, they are invited to do so at this time. We just ask you to give us your name and address for the minutes. You can step up to the podium here and address your comments to the commission, limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment is open at 7:11. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that back up. We'll get extended public comment later in the meeting. So we'll move on to our business items. So they're under other business because we've seen it before. So you have the text amendment, the proposed change to the zoning ordinance for solar energy facilities. And you have in your packet, the update from staff and communication from the applicant, but I'll ask if Rodney or Peter has anything you want to say by way of introduction. This is going to be a public hearing for us tonight and then we'll move on to consideration.
So just a brief introduction for purposes of recorded, those who might be viewing this as recorded. This is, as you said, a text amendment application that's been submitted to make two changes to section 6.39 of our zoning ordinance, which is the section that regulates solar energy systems. And the request was to increase the height, level height for freestanding solar energy facilities from, right now it's 20 feet, moved out to 25 feet. The, in addition to that, staff recommended that some setback changes be included to adjust the minimum required setbacks, essentially to reflect that increase in height and also address some larger facilities and provide for reasonable setbacks all around. So the amendment covers those two areas as we go ahead and answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. So because this is a zoning, proposed change to the zoning ordinance, it requires a public hearing. And so we'll move to the public hearing now. We want to give everyone an opportunity to speak, so we'll ask people to seek recognition and again, come up to the podium, speak into the microphone, give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to three minutes. Once everyone who wants to speak has spoken, we'll entertain possibility of recognizing people for additional comments. So the public hearing on PTXT 21-02, what's being dubbed the Coin Solar Energy Amendment, that public hearing is open at 7:15. I don't know if it's like C-SPAN where they can only see me and they can't see the audience, but there's no one here right now, so we'll wait a minute or so just to, if anyone rushes in from outside who wants to speak. There's been no written communication about this, I'm assuming?
No, we don't receive anything regarding this particular public hearing.
Okay. Well, once again, if someone rushes in in the next couple of minutes here, we'll let them speak, but let the record show that no public comments were offered and we'll close the public hearing. So it's, it's open for discussion, so that ultimately our action is a recommendation to the Board, either to approve or not approve. And so the item is open for discussion. We have discussed it before, but if there's any questions that anyone has, this would be a good time to ask.
I had a question. Table one, minimum setbacks, is that, there are two tables there, is that all a part of table one? Because it speaks to conform to minimum required setbacks distance specified in table one. And then the first part of table one is all, it's right there. So is that second part, part of table one as well?
It is. Essentially, the first part is the existing table one, which we're proposing to delete and replace.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Actually, that raises the question, I guess maybe it's a dumb question because I haven't come back and seen, placed this within the existing ordinance, but on page one is table two and on page two is table one. Are they misnumbered or do they renumber because it's in a different section or?
It's actually, the way, the way this is written, if you look, we have part one, part two, this is just how we developed this amendment. So if you see part two actually refers to subsection D height. And of course, that's the amendment that Mr. Coyne requested. And so we want to put that first. And then after that, part three actually refers to subsection C, which would actually be the subsection before. That's how, that's how the oddity happened. But we wanted to, we wanted to set it in order with what Mr. Coyne requested and then what, what staff asked to be added to it.
Rodney, has Mr. Coyne given you any feedback on the proposed adjustments to the setbacks?
He has no objection to the, to the change.
Okay.
I think you captured everything we had discussed in our previous conversation, but I still struggle with the titles, draft news and primary news. You know, I'm average Joe. Is there, is that in our definitions? I didn't go look.
It is, yes.
It is in our definitions, okay.
And Peter's very good with, when folks have asked, he, of course, he's a wonderful resource and is able to help folks walk through those processes.
And just to clarify, so this is 75-foot setback, front setback from any easement or just the road easement?
The front, front yard setbacks are always measured from the edge of the road right of way.
Road right of way.
You may have a, you might have a utility easement or something that's beyond that. That would be part of that 75-foot setback.
Okay.
I assume Rodney that the, the new setbacks don't, there's no conflict or anything out of the ordinary area as it comes to maybe state benchmarks or standards in that regard?
Well, these, what's proposed is similar to what ordinances for these larger solar installations that have, are required to deal with in other communities. 200-foot setback is very common.
Okay.
And it's, it's largely there because these large facilities, which can often, sometimes they have hundreds of acres, have a significant visual impact on the neighborhood. So getting back a little further, giving room frankly, because they tend to be more rural spaces, giving room to put their plant of rural crops between the facility and the road is exactly what the 200-foot setback is for.
Okay.
So 200 feet from each side yard on four, on greater than two acres. So I have four acres and I only have 335 feet of width, I'm pretty sure. Is that right? Yeah, that'd be right. How am I going to put that in my backyard with four acres?
Well, one thing you might, if you look at this, what it says is the primary use facilities, ground mounted, encumbering two acres of earth. So this is actually the amount of land that the facility is occupying. If you have four acres of land, but you want to, you want to put up an acre and a half of solar, then you would be subject to the shorter setback regardless.
Okay.
And that was done on purpose because even, again, on these larger facilities, they may, they may be using a 100-acre piece of farm ground, but they may only occupy 30, 30 of those acres. And so we want to talk about how much are they actually occupying.
Okay. Thank you. Another couple of two questions.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the township board trustee that the PTXT 21-02 text amendments to section 6.39, solar energy systems, a zoning ordinance number 28-06, to increase the maximum along the height and to adjust the minimum setback standards for ground mounted solar energy facilities be adopted as submitted for a public hearing.
Support. So the motion was made by Labell and seconded by this guy. Oh, sorry. I guess I'm, let me ask this. When it says be adopted as submitted for the public hearing, is that referring to the public hearing that will be conducted by the Board?
No, that's, the document you have in front of you.
Oh, it's submitted for the public hearing, meaning as submitted to us for the public hearing.
Right. The reason for that somewhat awkward language is because it is different than the language submitted by Mr. Coyne, which only addressed one issue.
Yeah.
So I want to be specific on which version, which, what ultimately you're recommending.
Okay, okay. I guess, I guess normally the motions reflect for site plans and other things, it refers to a date. You know, like the, the thing as of December 6th or something like that. So they struck me as weird. All right. Any further discussion? If not, then all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, no negative vote. So that'll go to the Board and they'll proceed with that from there. So the next item is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. So we discussed this last month, we looked at the survey. There's a draft revised survey in there. There's also the first couple of sections of the draft of the, of the actual master plan, that would be the new master plan. So once again, I will turn it over to Rodney if you want to say anything by way of introduction to that.
Just a couple of, a couple of comments. As you said, the, the survey document I have before you has been updated. The goal was to reflect the direction given at our last meeting. Hopefully that comes through. Certainly if there's any other adjustments that you'd like to make, we're happy to do that. If you're comfortable with the survey, then we would proceed to start, we had to be preparing to get this done and get some information back. As was mentioned, you have the first two chapters in draft form for the updated plan. These are kind of technical updates. It's not a policy update, update, but it's just updating the details for the community. You get on page 20 of your packet, a hot off the presses, a township level 2020 U.S. census data that just became available, literally just before we were putting up the agenda. So you have some information there on that, related to that. And then in the administrative structure section, also a little bit of hot off the presses information on the last page, we've, we've been making some adjustments internally, our school already has been making some adjustments to, to responsibilities related to parks and recreation. And I have been asked, the community, economic belt department has been asked to, to service the liaison with our sports teams, that are leagues that use our sports fields and making sure that they're, they're all settled and they pay to reserve property, that sort of thing. So that, the organizational structure reflects that element that give justice, is changing right now, meeting actually, I think tomorrow with the leagues to get introduced. So anyway, this, this is to kind of whet your whistle a bit with regards to the, the plan and give you some information to take a look at. Make, make this to take a look at the survey and make sure you're comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so let's look at the survey first, so it sounds like this is getting close to being ready to administer, so this would be perhaps your last opportunity to make suggestions for either other questions or modifying the questions that are in here, so open for discussion.
This is minor, just a couple typos on page three. Number 16, the township, the capital. And then in the next line, between facilities and services, there's an extra space between facilities and.
Thank you. I always appreciate the extra ayes and, read it a million times and read right, right over it.
You've got this, I mean, right now anyway, it's, it's set up as a written, printed, fill it in, mail it or drop it back off survey, but is it going to be exclusively that way or is there a thought of trying to have an online version?
That's the next thing we're going to be looking at is what, how can we, how can we facilitate this? The main issue with online is if we simply put it on the website, then we don't have any ability to kind of make sure that we're getting information from actual township residents. But we're going to be looking at what, what our options are. This, this may be something where, we have, we have some money, for example, to, for consultant to give us a hand with this. Our consultant that, that helped us with our downtown development authority plans last year, did a lot with survey, similar to this, and had an electronic version. And so I may ask them to come in and kind of offer some suggestions of how best to proceed with that. I'd like, certainly would like to have an electronic version. The data comes in, it's much easier to deal with, it comes electronically. But we want to make sure that, that we're, we're getting feedback from our residents.
Are you sending this out to all households or how are you determining how to send it out?
That is another good question. And that's also something we're looking at. An easy option is to, is to, to all the property, all parcels of the township, but that does not get folks the apartments, for example. So we'll be looking at that aspect. We want to do it as broadly as we can. We want to make sure we're getting student rentals, other rentals as well as owner occupied properties.
And to clarify though, it's one per household, so it's not like husband-wide, it's just one per family?
That's, that's, whatever we're really on, yes, we want one for each address, I guess. That again gets us back to that electronic option. And so we're going to look at that and it may be that we, I mean, there's, there's a number of ways we could do it. One way, we could send postcards and have all electronic option. And then all members of the household can get in and do the, fill out their own. The only challenge there is for those that don't have the ability to do the electronic in this house. So we have to kind of look at what works best. So that would be next up on this.
I like that you're looking at electronic because I think that Commissioner Albert makes a good point in terms of not just a household voice, but a resident voice, is what we're looking for. I think it also makes sense for, you know, student, the student population or the, you know, young adult population in Union Township is substantial. And I think that, you know, it's an ongoing population, even though the faces change, I think it's important to, for each of them to be able to have that voice too. I was, I wasn't here for the conversation last month. I did have a question just about, at the risk of adding in more, too many options, but I think the social media, the question in number 16 about what the response from, how people prefer to receive things. I don't know if there's, it's, it's either Facebook or social media, essentially a little social media or other. It's probably easy enough to add some additional options if it's electronic. But I'm just wondering if there's, there's a wide diversity of social media, obviously, and it probably, your use of Facebook or any other social media specifically depends on your age. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to, like you say, if it's fill-in and it's something that is online, then it's probably easy enough for everybody to just say, this is how I consume my information. But I don't know if written is, gives all that, gives room to do all that, I guess. Say that.
We certainly could add, I mean, Instagram, we could add Twitter, we've had a remarkable number of options. I filled out a survey that I think had 16 options on it not that long ago. One of the reasons for these options is because whatever we do, whatever, whatever information we get, the township staff would be doing it. Right now, the township's social media presence is our website. We don't have Facebook, we don't do anything else. That is by choice. That's, that's at this point, the administration's preference is to, it's because we, we do not have somebody we can dedicate to doing that.
Yeah.
And if you're going to be on social media, you really do have to be active and watching it. It takes a lot of time. So these were, Facebook is, is easy, there are a number of community oriented Facebook sites. It's a location where we could relatively easily be involved if we chose to.
Yeah.
It's a location where we could relatively easily be involved if we chose to. But if, if, if you'd like, we certainly can add other options.
Well, and I, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill, but if it's something that like, if somebody's, because yeah, if we're going to choose a social media platform or even two social media platforms that we might start. I mean, we are, we're asking them how they want to receive their information. And if it's, if the respondent uses it as Facebook or nothing, I don't know what that means to them as opposed to if you're including, like you say, Twitter, I don't know, Instagram maybe, I guess. I mean, I'd love to see you guys out there making TikToks, but I don't think that that's necessarily. You know what I mean? So I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill, but if somebody only, I don't want to give the impression to somebody that's Facebook or nothing. So I guess more of just an observation, I guess.
Would it be more appropriate to then just say other social media and eliminate Facebook as the option? And what people say what they use?
Yeah, I could. I mean, as long as, even just on the, on the response, if it's saying, yeah, I mean, it does say other social media. When I was reading it, I was just seeing other, so I guess I didn't pay attention to that part. So yeah, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's sufficient. Maybe what we have is sufficient. But I do think that you, I, I'm only, my gut tells me that you're going to see the majority of people say, yeah, I want the news through some sort of social media, so.
I was under the impression that the township did have a Facebook page. Did it have one?
I think at one point there was. It's long been.
Kind of defaulted.
Not active.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I'm okay with it the way it is because I feel like it prompts them, if they don't like Facebook or don't use Facebook, it prompts them to put in the one they want. I'm also okay with just saying, social media blank and letting them fill in. If people feel that fake reference to Facebook is too suggestive or too, you know, pro-Facebook or whatever, or makes us seem like we're all, you know, 60 like I am. Then I would just do, I would just do social media blank and let them fill in whatever.
And when you say direct mailing, could, could you be more specific? Like maybe a monthly newsletter with key dates for the month and changes and budget? How's your money getting spent mailed to all the addresses? But I mean, it'd take a commitment from the whole, you'd have supervisor, coroner, whatever. But but a one pager type, something you can put on refrigerator and oh, there's a planning commission tonight. I'm going to go to the planning commission because it's important.
I think if, if, if we were going to do newsletter, I suspect it would be twice a year. Because I suspect what we do is, is do something that we can put into the tax bills.
Just because mailing is expensive.
It is, yes, it is very expensive. So yeah, it would not be monthly. If we were going to do something monthly, we'd probably work out something with the newspaper and just take out a page, page ad or something with the newspaper.
But an electronic newsletter would be, if you had an email list, I suppose, you could do it more frequently if it's electronic newsletter as opposed to print.
But it is still a large commitment.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Absolutely.
Having, having done newsletters.
Right.
It's a monster commitment.
Right. And again, I don't want to parse this too much, but like, because there is the direct email bulletins from the township, that's not necessarily saying newsletter. I don't know that it necessarily is intended to be, be newsletter. But if somebody wanted to opt in on emails for important announcements or public hearings or that sort of thing, does that convey that in this, in these choices here? You know what I mean?
Well, the first one is direct email bulletins, so they.
Right, that's what I mean. I didn't know what bulletins, if that was.
Yeah. That would be an opt-in process.
I'm going to parse a little bit here. On the first page on five and six, you say on a scale of one to five, what scale you do is five to one?
Well, you know, I, I wrote that the way and thought it looked weird. And so what is your, what are your thoughts? If you, if you think five to one works better, I'm completely happy to change it.
I would say reorganize your choices one to five then. I don't understand why you'd say a scale of one to five, but then present the scale as five to one. It seems like that's backwards.
Yeah, the one reason I did it that way, and I agree, it is odd. But generally, when you're, when you're looking at a scale, best is over here, worst is over here. That at least is what I'm, I'm used to. And it may be different, maybe I'm odd. And I'm completely okay if you tell me I'm odd and it should go the other direction.
Because I think all the Likert scales I see are always one to five or one to four or whatever. And it's always left to right. And we need left to right. So it just feels like the numbers are, we need left to right. But I don't know, do other people, did anybody else notice that? Maybe it doesn't matter. Maybe it makes the top over true.
I didn't, but I agree with you.
You could almost just take it out and just start the sentence with five is the top and, you know, one is the lowest or something like that. How would you rate the overall? And then just leave it how you have it.
I'm completely okay to reverse it, especially for the reason that you mentioned. And I appreciate your comment.
The other option, I suppose another option if you prefer would be, because they can still be numerically coded, I think in the processing, would be excellent, very good, good, fair, poor.
That, you know, it's interesting because that's actually what it originally said on one of the two questions. And we had a comment last time about, about that. I don't remember, I don't have that note in front of me, but there was, there was a reason this was changed to the one to five. The other benefit, I would tell you that the reason, the other reason for the one to five is, is the end result of that would be in numerical value, 3.6 to 4.1, whatever that number is. So it makes for a nice piece of data.
But couldn't that, couldn't that be still programmed in to be done behind the scenes? Because you have five choices.
It could, but it's one more step. It's just like everything else, it takes time, especially for getting, you know, paper responses back. But even electronic, you know, for getting electronics responses, it, it works better for them if, if we have a one to five.
Could we just have, it could be a fill in the blank of one to five, on a scale from one to five, and then you just put them, type in the number?
It could. And most of them are check boxes, so we, that's why we just said it, the check boxes. I can, I can change it to just be one.
Maybe if you're, which I'm assuming you're doing this. Maybe if you're having that conversation with a consultant, you can talk to them about the best, in terms of layouts and the best way to, I guess, display responses. And they can advise you as to their expertise and you can use your best judgment.
I have a question about, question. We talked about that at the last meeting. And we were talking about these improvements that exist. We talked about technology as an option. And we're talking about solar tables that provide Wi-Fi. That was one of the discussions and that's not here. And again, my, my question to add on to that is, it seems as if by virtue of having these seven options, that it's predetermined that these are the priorities. How was, how were these developed? What, what informed that these should be? Because I can come up with seven different options. So I was just trying to understand what informed these seven options. Because it sounds like we know what we do in survey. Our, please describe the versions of the issues of all the choices. Because people sometimes don't understand technology. They check boxes, they don't write, especially if it's electronic. So I was just trying to understand that because I don't, I don't know if any of these should be a priority. Unless there's something that helps them more.
Yeah. So first of all, it's the technology. I did make notes about, about the technology and, and those are elements that, that it felt more like those should simply be noted in the plan as possibilities. They are. This was trying to hit at some pretty basic elements of whether or not we get tables with Wi-Fi. Actually largely depends on whether our public services director can find a source that she's comfortable with and can be maintained. And so I don't want to be asking about something that I meant, that, that, from a maintenance perspective, maintenance folks may not want to even get near. So I don't want to build expectations or something I can't provide. And these are all, these are all elements that we could do, that maintenance folks could do if we needed to. That one, from a technology standpoint, we're not quite in that place yet with that. It's more of a piece of equipment rather than an overall improvement. Essentially, the questions 12, 13 and 14 are all related in terms of the improvements. The original survey, some of these items were duplicated. And in fact, if you went through the original survey and went through this one, you probably, we deleted some things. It had appeared in question, now question 12 or 13. It's not in 14 anymore, for example, which was the broadest list. But the intent is essentially to give sort of three bites to the apple. These 12 and 13 were items that have been recognized in various ways as being potentially important. Some of them right here, this, especially a couple of questions or checkboxes in 13. The first one frankly, the act to cover the land and the act of the land of the running and walking track. But all the acts in 12 or 13 have been identified somewhere along the way as this is something we'd really like to see happen potentially. 14 is a question that came from, from a general survey. Actually, a couple of different general surveys from other communities or samples that we looked at. These are some of the various kind of broad possibilities, you might say. With, with, I think the exception of the disc golf course, there's not been specific talk about it. Even the disc golf course was not just sort of what about kind of a question, I think, that came up one time. So, so essentially, like I said, we're just, we're trying to get with 12 and 13, let's hear about, you know, the feelings about specific things that they've been interested in. But 14, are there other things that people might be interested in? That's sort of the format.
Let me go back to 13 for a second. I'm not sure that the staff doesn't want to. There's a compelling reason to not do it. This is, if it's public good, then, and it's a need, then if the resources are there, you do it. If not, you know, there are a lot of people, staff that don't want to mow grass, doesn't mean we're not going to have plants.
I apologize if I, if I misspoke. I didn't intend to say staff doesn't want to. What I'm saying is that that's an item that, that will take more research to, to look at. Is there, is there an option that we, union townships can bring in that will function for us? That will be a, will have durability, will have, and we have the ability to maintain, that will do what we want it to do. So at this point, there's research that needs to be done before I think a survey question could be asked. And that's, that's where we are for that, that particular item.
Well, and, and I gave some very specific examples during, I mean, this is the business that I'm in professionally. So I, I understand it. I spend a lot of time on these things. There are solutions that answer all of those questions. I gave an example of picking tables that have, that's covered, that have solar panels, that, that provide Wi-Fi and, and electric or, you know, those, those things are already there. This isn't new technology. This is just, it would be new to our community, but it's not new in the industry. So those things are already there. I don't think we, if people don't know about it because they're not informed or experts, I'm expecting that part because they're going to say, well, whenever I go to a baseball field, I don't have Wi-Fi access because I don't think it's available. Well, I think it's our responsibility to tell them, yeah, it is available. Now, cost and all of those things, that's all another discussion. But I think that's a question that can inform priority. Because essentially, that's what we're doing. With question 13, we're not probing what we should do. We're probing what the priorities are. That's what we're, and that's why I was asking who determined that? And you gave some, some examples of where, how that was informed. So it wasn't informed through a previous survey. It was informed through what's happening in other communities and what can happen here. Well, technology can happen here. And it's already happening, that's what I'm saying. It's not a, it's not, it's not even innovative anymore. It's starting to become commonplace, is what I'm getting at. So to leave something out, especially for young people that we're trying to bring into these spaces, that's essential to them. It's essential to grandma and grandpa who will send, send photos of their grandkids playing sports and they may not have some of the opportunities through their cellular plan to be able to do that. So Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi is starting to become very commonplace. That's what, that's what I was getting at with that. And I don't know how often, I can recall how often this is done. So I notice I've done it anyway. So if that's the case, if this is done five years from now, there were five more years behind the technology. Unless somebody just boldly makes a decision that this is something that should be done. So I, I think it's important. You know, I was a part of the master planning that was done, Parks and Recreation Master Planning when that was done. And we were talking about technology. We did that because these solutions didn't exist at the time, but they exist today.
Well, there's a couple, I give a couple of thoughts. First of all, I'm completely happy to add something to this list. This is not in any way cyclical, cast and sews, this is a pencil. We can change it, adjust it, whatever we like to do. My intent was with technology was to really focus on it as a project. Put it in the plan as, as one of the recommended projects to actually add Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi at the parks. So it was, this was not something to ask about, but rather actually something to go ahead and, I made the note, as I made notes for several items we've discussed, that really needs to be proposed in the plan. So not even asking the question, so to say the answer is yes, we'd like to propose it in the plan. And from there then, you know, you said that the research would be done to figure out exactly how to do it. But that, that was really where we were going. My, one of the reasons why, for the perspective of Andy has a question. I think the answer to the question, should we have Wi-Fi in the parks, is going to be overwhelming, yes. And it was, so I could sort of ask the question. We had a question in the original survey that talked about park maintenance. And it was a question frankly designed to get, yes, we really find park maintenance to be important. That question is usually, and it, it had like five categories. This kind of maintenance, several different things, but it all, do you, do you, do you want, do you think it's important to have park maintenance? And I think it's sort of one of those one to five scales, if I recall. I took it out, we just ran out of room when we had to know what next to it. That, that maintenance question is, is usually in park surveys to, because the next thing after this park survey is going to be a request for a parks village. In most communities, that would be the next thing. That's not our next thing. But in most communities, when they're doing a park survey, the next question that they're going to ask is, will you support a village? And so the, the maintenance question is part of that. What, helping people to see the value in, in that village. It's somewhat the same thing here. If we put the question in there, it'd be largely driving that yes answer that we really can all, almost have a consensus. That's what we're going to get. And so that's, that's the only other reason I would leave it out. But I absolutely, I've already made the note to include it in the plan itself as part of the proposed activities.
Well, let me, let me just add this as a perspective. This question is informing priorities. If I'm a trustee, which I'm not trustee, there it is. And I'm sitting, making decisions about priorities and resources. And I'm using an informed strategy to do that. I'm going to look at the survey. Technology is not on the survey. It's in a, it's in a, because apparently these things are important through a lens. Again, I still don't quite understand the lens because it's just been informed by, because these are very specific. It doesn't say, build a pavilion. It says, build a pavilion at McDonald Park. It says, build a pavilion at McDonald Park. So I mean, it's very, very specific. More importantly, if, if this is a question of not setting necessarily setting priorities, we're already on our way to building an aquatic facility, supported by the township. That question should even be there if we're setting priorities, because that priority has already been supported through the formation of the Michigan Aquatic Authority, Recreation Authority, that the township is investigating. So the township is, those are known, owns a partnership with the school district and Mount Pleasant School District and the city of Mount Pleasant. Those are the three entities that have equally invested at this point. There's no greater partner than the other, and I'm actually the township's representative to that authority. So, so that question probably shouldn't even be asked because we, we've already asked it, we've studied it, we've done feasibility study, we have the Heart Act, we are on our way to design and, and you know, so on and so forth. So again, just trying to inform decisions. I understand the intent of yes, technology is important, but that's, that's not documented anywhere. The public should be saying, it's important. Now here, it, it doesn't set the priorities through a scale of one group, it just says, which are the following? So I can check all of them. That means all of them are important to me. So I, again, I'm just trying, I see this as an opportunity because, you know, we're falling behind in that, in that area, and I think it's very important, especially with the recreation patterns of young people today. And again, I say this as an expert, okay? You know, Commissioner Squatino is a chemist, I'm not. So I'm a, I'm a recreation and sports professional, and so this is what I do. So I know the trends, I know what's happening in communities and university campuses, and I, I see an opportunity for our community to be able to say, to your point, I think you, you said it probably better than I did, I think it'd be number one priority to me. But let the survey inform that not our opinion as individuals can just have a hot fashion, let's, you know, let's do that. And I, I guess I'm strongly committed to this because I think it's an amenity that's grossly been overlooked. And one today, that is not a luxury, it's a, it's a necessity.
Would you prefer to have a separate question on this particular topic, or would you want it to be one of these choices under question thirteen?
Because it's not a question of putting these in priority order, I don't think it needs to be a question by itself. If it was about, if it was about importance, I would say, yeah, let's take it. Would you like technology in the, in the parks? Yes or no? But because this is not rank ordering anything, it's just letting people check which ones they see the value in. I think you can sit there and, and, and be compared then. Be compared because we know that there is going to be a quantitative value associated, X number of citizens said, so that, you know, that's going to give us some qualitative, you know, some qualitative values, so just something.
But, I'm sorry, Stan, are you looking at question thirteen or fourteen?
I am, question thirteen.
Question thirteen on my copy says, please check one, asking for your highest priority.
And as it's currently worded, it's please check one. We don't have to have.
Right, well, I was going to suggest that, and I agree with you, that, that this is probably one of the key questions from the standpoint of planning, because you're trying to assess what, you know, I get, I mean, these are sort of more, you know, like capital improvement types of things. And so, you know, for the township to decide, well, which ones are we going to try to do? You know, this is going to be an important question. I worry about limiting it to one because if you only, if you pick one, you don't know what people's second choices are. And so I would be in favor of making sure that everything that's, you know, out there that's a possibility is, and relevant is on there, and maybe ask them to take their top two choices, something like that. There's probably too few on there to have top three because there's almost, that's already more than half of the.
Would it make sense? I, I completely understand what Commissioner Shingles is saying, because anytime you offer examples, you are essentially asking somebody to pick from the examples. And if, if you're asking somebody to pick from the examples without having any kind of awareness as to what, gathered any kind of feedback from residents already as to what projects they, they might be interested in, anything that's excluded from the list is not even really mentioned. It's not a consideration, but, so it is a little bit leading in that way, but at the same time, I certainly understand why we would want to provide some examples so people have a sense of, this is the types of things that we could do. So I'm wondering if the phrasing on this question, and I really have no problem with how many responses there are personally, I don't care if there's twenty responses, if it meant that you're giving valuable feedback from the residents, but maybe it's, we're phrasing it as, you know, if we say adding a covered pavilion, you know, it's for instance, such as a pavilion next to at McDonald Park playground. Maybe there is a technology question that says, you know, technology improvements such as wifi. I would think for, for myself, I would think solar charging stations would be equally as important because I have my own cellular service, but I'm going to run out of a battery at some point on my phone, you know, somewhere. And so, you know, offering a kind of a, a such as, and maybe a few examples from kind of big buckets of ideas, that way you're stimulating some ideas from the respondent, but then giving them like you do have, an other section that allows them to fill in something that might be overlooked or maybe not, maybe it's a little bit more of a granular idea than they have that we're not listing, but at least we're maybe walking the line where we're, we're offering some examples to stimulate the imagination, but also, you know, making sure that we give enough types of examples that people feel like they're at least able to respond in, in big bucket categories of things.
So we do have, I mean, question number fourteen has a broadness, a lot of sort of, wide a variety of things. It certainly does tend to be exhaustive, but, but it, it does cover a broader ground.
And these are, but that question is getting at actual facilities. This question is improvements or amenities, which are different than expanded facilities. And, and there's probably a phrasing issue that we can look at there in terms of making it clear why we're asking two separate questions, but I do get the point that one is, you know, a facility addition or expansion is very different than the inclusion of an amenity or the inclusion of an enhancement to an existing place. So I think both, it warrants two separate questions, but to your point, yeah, there are a lot of options to write in there, and there's no reason why we couldn't do that with number thirteen as well.
Well, obviously, one solution could be rephrasing to Commissioner Buckley's point of maybe rephrasing question fourteen to say, which are the following, new recreation facilities or amenities or services, either one of those, because technology is a service, it's not an amenity, it's not a facility, because that's new. That doesn't exist because this is talking about improvements in thirteen. So maybe that's where it can go, and those are in alpha orders, so it's not in any way, it's all, all of them are in alpha order, but because there's so many of them, and if I remember correctly, that was a recommendation at our last meeting, was to put those in alpha order, so they did look like they were prioritized. So maybe adding technology, but you know, again, that's not a facility, so you know, we would have to then just state that it's recreation facilities. And we're already using the term amenities, some people know what that means, some people don't. Service is because technology is a service, but it's also an amenity. So maybe that satisfies it just to give it a place, and of course, that then helps to prioritize in that one, two, three versus one. Again, one choice of these seven facilities that started from my oversight, but the highest priority, I didn't, I didn't see that. That's, that's limited choices versus, you know, we're asking for three here, one here in improvements, should that be, should that be more than one, to give some variety so people can say, these are my three things, and then obviously as we, we take the data and, and, you know, and we, we aggregated, then it's going to be, you know, there's going to be numbers to clearly state what the priorities are.
So, so what you're, it sounds like what you suggested would be to, to, to not make the change to thirteen, we'll delete it, like aquatic facilities, you're absolutely right, we don't need that there. So we would have then six choices in question thirteen, pick, pick one or pick two of, okay, we're picking two, there's add value in giving a second choice, as you said, in thirteen. And then what if we were to add, because right now in fourteen, they're all kind of very short statements, and I would be concerned about adding a long statement, kind of a such as type statement, because then it would stand out in the list. But what if we added two items here? One is solar charging stations, and second would be public wifi into this list, and put, just put them in alphabetical order.
I think those are good ideas.
You could even do a third that just simply says, other technological enhancements or something, so, but there is an other opportunity for them to fill in as well, but I mean, you know, we're not restricted to two types of technologies, but I guess that's, maybe that's doubling up on them being able to fill in their own response as well. Yeah.
I would just think if we're going to add a couple more to question fourteen, I would say, check up to three, I would do check up to five.
That's a good point.
Because, I mean, just because there's so many there, if technology was over on thirteen, I would say check up to three on that one. Just because the idea is to get the feedback, what's first, second, third?
Yeah.
Or in this case, first and second, if we're only going to do two on thirteen.
So perhaps two on, two on thirteen, you're suggesting five on fourteen?
I mean, just throwing it out there, I mean, I would do up to five, I don't have to, but just because there's so many options.
Okay. Have we kind of covered, I have one other small question, I guess, or observation, but I didn't want to cut off the conversation if we haven't kind of covered that yet. Were we happy with that, where we are now?
I do have one question related to.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Our target audience for say McDonald Park is families, young kids, it's not necessarily the young adult, the college students. And I was just wondering if Commissioner Shingles knows of any negative impacts of putting wifi, free wifi in the parks. Are we going to get an audience there camped out using the wifi, the free wifi, and that you don't necessarily want there? I'm just asking.
That's a great question, and then obviously, every time we put things in public spaces, you know, you're going to have attractive nuisance, I mean, that just shows up, and you know, I mean, it just has to be managed. It traps me right, especially as it relates to those, sort of those challenging kinds of things that are part of, you know, technology, because the average kid today has a, has a cell phone that has, you know, that has cellular service to it, that, you know, provides them access to other things, but, but some don't because they can't afford it, and sometimes it's just a question of how much access do they have, is there a little bit of plans and, you know, those kinds of things. And obviously, we did talk about the charging stations. I don't know if we need to get as specific as talking about solar charging stations because that, that's, it sounds like we already made the decision that they have to be solar. They don't, they don't, they, you know, you know, run power lines to them, that's, the solar is a sustainable product, it makes sense, it's, the, the cost has come down tremendously on that stuff, and, you know, today, you can take a bat to that stuff and can't destroy it. That's how it's been designed now over the years, and so, you know, I think if we're informing it, let's keep the language simple as opposed to say, it has to be solar, no? I just, let me just give an example, with the complex that's seeing you at softball and multipurpose fields, you have a service building. The service building has two outlets in it. Those outlets are more popular than the games during, during tournaments and because when people run out of, out of, they're looking for a source, they see a building and they go, and there's two outlets on each side of the building, and that's where they go plug their phones in. Well, you know, that service is brought to, we're talking about that, you know, how do we bring that service to those, and those fields, for instance, are used by the public. That's part of, Mount Pleasant Parks and Rec has their softball leagues there and that type of thing, and that's just, that's just how we do things today, you know? When we built that in nineteen ninety-eight, we weren't talking about, how many outlets do we have? Because people need to plug their devices in. We didn't have devices that we needed to plug in, but today, we do. So it has to be addressed, and it's not cheap to do it, you know? Check out all kinds of options, obviously they have lights out there, and how do you feed off of those lights to create outlets, you know, we talked about that. So just giving, you know, some ideas, again, it doesn't have to be solar, but it can be.
I only, it's really maybe just an observation, but I'm wondering, because we do say in question thirteen, we mentioned the expansion, expanded network of paved pathways, but we do have in question, is it eleven? No, I'm sorry, ten. If you answered yes to being, having a disability, we do say access improvements. But we don't draw a direct line to sidewalks or pathways within parks for the purpose of disabilities, is that, and I'm only throwing it out there, is it necessary to kind of draw a line directly to that under a question about people with disabilities? You know, is access improvements sufficient? I, I don't know, maybe it is. I just figured I'd draw attention to it and see if anybody that's had an opinion.
Well, to your point, Commissioner Buckley, like where it says paved walking and biking paths, if you just change that to accessible, but not everybody knows what accessible.
Right.
I mean, that's the terminology that's used in, you know, ADA language and, and, but does that speak specifically to, you know, your question? I think it can for those who have disabilities and are looking for access or accessible, I'm sorry, not access, but accessible.
Maybe we could certainly use the term barrier free access improvements.
That might be, yeah, that might be.
Well, let me ask this. Does the ADA require that paved pathways be accessible?
Oh, if, if we're paving a pathway, we need to design it, yes, perfectly, this is exactly, that's, that's built into the project. We can't, we can't create a pathway or sign.
Well, I'm not suggesting you should, or that, I guess my, I guess my point was that I think the fact that they would have to be, I guess to me anyway, would cover, would cover that. In other words, I think access improvements in ten is, is sufficient perhaps?
Where, where I think there's a benefit in ten, having, first of all, having this item, and even be more specific about barrier free access, is, I mean, for example, in Jameson Park, as part of the improvements that are going on right now, sidewalk was constructed across the front, we have a sidewalk connector that goes into the park, it, but not everything has a paved pathway to it, the playground.
That's what I'm thinking.
Play equipment doesn't, I mean, there are certain elements that are barrier free, but there are certain, there are others that are not. So if, if, if we get that, that is a priority response, that will then move things along to make sure that gets incorporated to other projects. With Jameson Park, there was a, before I came on board, there was sort of a, this is our, what we're going to be doing. I was able to tweak a few things to get along these lines, but not able to rewrite the whole script. So I think the value is certainly asking about barrier free improvements as of separate items.
On item thirteen, where it says add lighted up or running, walking, track, do you think we're giving a, maybe we could say the word path or hard surface, hard surface path, not necessarily a track. Track sometimes led you to believe an oval track, but, I don't know, I, I was, when I suggested, I was thinking around the whole park, but.
We'd use the word course. I mean, we're already using pathway elsewhere.
Yep, I agree.
This is, I think, was a. I mean, we, you know, this, I think, was intended to be a, a self-contained...
Self-contained, give, in McDonald Park borders, but something big that you could walk around, you could utilize existing pathways, but it would be a, a way for people to get out and exercise, or come to the park and exercise, so...
So I think that, that's up to you, I, I, we could use the word course, we could use pathway, uh, track.
Well, is it envisioned as paved, or is it envisioned as that kind of high-tech, soft stuff that people actually run on? That's like a track is maybe that?
Yeah, that's, that, I, I, I don't know, actually, that's something we would be looking at when we're, we're, in the design phase of it. So, right now, it's just the idea, this is something we want to put as a priority, to have this amenity at this particular park.
Yeah, yeah.
The, what looks like, you know, it could be crushed limestone, it could be asphalt, it could be, as you said, another material.
Yeah.
That's, that's, gets us into budget and design.
Yeah.
It might frankly be a combination of, is there parts of McDonald Park that are, well, there ain't those or not, we may use different materials in different areas.
Yeah. And I don't know enough about that form of recreation, the running part especially, to know whether the word track would cause certain people to have certain ideas and other people to, to have different ideas.
You could call it a loop.
I mean, that doesn't kind of take traditional track, but it doesn't kind of take any kind of specific surface either.
Yeah. A loop, I think, would be a good, good option, granted.
Any comments or questions on the survey? So, are we, uh, thinking we want to see this again, or are we okay with him just proceeding based on the feedback given?
I think we probably need to confirm exactly where we are with thirteen and fifteen, because we offer, we have lots of options, and I don't think we really landed on specifically outside of, uh, landing the, the quality facility, I think all of us have your suggestions, and, um, if you feel like we've landed.
It, it does sound like there'd be value in having to take what we're looking at.
And that doesn't interfere with your, the timing too much?
No, we'll continue to work on the elements of the survey, and, you know, and how we're going to generate it, and, so, it will, it will.
Well, hopefully March doesn't suddenly become such a jammed agenda that we can't really, better deal with it, but, um... So the last, the, the second part of this was the beginnings of the, of the draft of the new document. The old document, by the way, is, including the index, is sixty-seven pages. So you're not seeing a super large part of the, of the, what I assume will, maybe the old one would be as long, but, and there's a lot of figures in it, maps and so on, but this is the early stages of it, but, uh, if you had a chance to read it, I'm sure Rodney would appreciate any comments. I noticed one typo, uh, under history, second paragraph, there's an, a spurt and an extra of in there, right after union township.
Under table one, you have a category for age, sex, and health that you've never used, that's a, one of the, um, reports. So I would just remove it unless you're gonna include females and females of...
That, uh, that, I think, uh, there, there was data, but the data was, uh, it was, it was part of the American Committee Survey, the older data, it was not going to, so I think I, I, I just didn't take that out of the title, but...
I had a question, but in the, in the table, we have comparative data for, uh, twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. Is there comparative data for the other areas, so that we can see changes that occur since, so, for instance, if we're looking at, um, you know, how, uh, housing and poverty, you know, to forty, uh, owner occupied housing unit, forty point seven percent. What was that in twenty, what was that in the previous census year?
Yeah, uh...
That they even there.
The, the challenge you have, in, in some cases, they ask the question differently, in some cases, they, they record the answers differently, so it, uh, it, some of it may be comparable between the two. The, the element for, in terms of this plan, is really, is intended to provide a snapshot of time. It's not intended to be like a match plan, where we would be looking at what is, what are the trends? This is, for Parks and Rec, like, we're really looking at what's going on right now. We have the twenty-ten census number actually largely because of the twenty-twenty number is so controversial. The twenty-twenty number has, it's certainly, it's down, it's a pretty big drop, uh, and it's largely, at least some people think it's largely related to challenges with the count being in the midst of COVID. Uh, and, uh, in particular here, uh, the count took place after the students all left town, uh, with, with the CMU shutting down, uh, and live classes, uh, in first classes. So, the, the twenty-twenty number, uh, while it's there, and it is an official number, uh, is certainly not looked at as being the most accurate number, and, and so, that's why I talked to the twenty-ten number, just so they serve as a reference point, to kind of see where, where, where that is. These are numbers we have to work with, if they are what they are, and so, but it was intended essentially to be a snapshot of that, that little piece.
So, am I reading this correctly, in saying that the, of eleven thousand six hundred ninety-nine, people in our area, forty-three percent of those people are living in poverty?
That's what the census says, yes.
That's typically related to student population.
You didn't have student population.
We have, we have, we, we have, we have several populations that, that fit within that, but, but Isabella County is, is the county in the state of Michigan that is recognized by the state, by the federal government as, as a place of persistent poverty. I think we're the only county in the state that actually has that designation, uh, where we qualify for certain federal programs, we call, it, it ups our, if, if we're, if we're going after certain grants, it puts us at the top, and that kind of thing. Uh, but, but it is because of populations, a number of populations in the community that kind of, that create that sort of circumstance. It, it's one of those where it, it needs to drive our decision-making, it's a number of them, it's shocking, but it's also one that, that we need to recognize and make part of our decisions we make. I've been, uh, as part of, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, our Leadership Institute program, I had the opportunity this year to be a part of that, and, uh, one of our tours was at the Strickler, Strickler Center, uh, and it's a remarkable resources community, with multiple, you know, nonprofits working together to provide resources. And, and just hearing, sort of stories, and hearing the level of service, I mean, during the COVID shutdown, your cars lined up down the road, I remember, see?
Still are.
Yes, yes, still are, yes, because they're still doing that, that service, uh, for, say, reason, because of the pandemic. It, it, and we, we have a very significant need here, but we also, you know, if organizations step up to fill it, we, as part of our efforts, you know, it, it, this, this number informs our efforts, what we do with Parks and Rec, uh, again, to help provide services to that population.
And just to touch on that, maybe you guys would know, like, and I just heard this week, I haven't had a chance to verify it, that in some of these poverty numbers, to make Isabella County one of the poorest, doesn't factor in CMU and doesn't factor in tribe, is what I was told, I don't know if you can verify that, not the census itself, but when they do the, the poverty, so, people look at median household income, or somebody who's like, like a Dollar General, for example, they look at, okay, well, that's, that, there's their parameters, we're going there because these numbers are really low. So, again, that's what somebody just told me this week, because this, this conversation just came up about Isabella County being one of the poorest counties in the state, if not the poorest, so, and, but somebody did tell me that, that doesn't factor in those two, um, CMU faculty and staff, as well as, um, anybody that's tried, so I, I, again, I haven't verified that, would you?
And if I can't answer that, I don't have, so I...
I would think you would have CMU faculty and staff if they lived in Isabella.
Quite, I, again, I, again, I haven't had a chance to verify that, but there was, there was some uncertainty there of why that number was so low.
When you say, which, when you say the number was low, you're talking about the median, median income?
Yeah, whatever they deem poverty level on, whether it's median household income, or, or, I don't know what they use, I, like I said, I haven't had a chance to gather enough information, I know that question has been posed to Jim McBride at M M D C, again, and I don't know what that answer, or those discussions were just literally this, this week, so, I mean, it's on a Tuesday.
I, I wrote grants for years and years, and my understanding is all that data is derived from census, so, unless somebody is being excluded from census, then there's not a separate set of data that would exclude a set of the working population or a set of, you know, specific...
Well, it's not census related, this is, I'm not talking about this poverty number, I'm talking about a different number.
The census does capture median incomes and whatnot too, right?
Yeah, if that's what it is, like I said, I'm not sure, so, maybe what I should do is gather the data from the person that told me this.
Census typically gathers, I mean, this is not exclusive, the, the census gathers a lot more information than this.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, and so, anytime I've ever had to pull information about incomes, those sorts of things, it's all driven from the census. Um, and, and from a granting organization, that's the only thing that they would accept, they're not gonna accept something that is like a... They're gonna accept census data, they're not gonna accept private, privately generated data.
Yeah, I don't believe that's what it was, but, but I'll, I'll certainly, you know, try to get some more information, because if that's the case, that would certainly explain why our numbers are so low.
It's also, quickly, just an observation, in the table, it looks like the largest demographic, which is eighteen to sixty-four, it's missing. Under eighteen is down, under eighteen, over sixty-five, so, you said eighteen to sixty-five, it's missing. I don't know if that's broken down more, and that's the range, I'm not sure if it's missing.
I'll, I'll take a look at that, you know, that, this was, I can't recall. It may have been done simply to kind of focus on certain populations, this, I, I did that, if I, and I just can't recall why I took it out. Uh, so I'll go back and look if I, if it's repainted.
Not the sound. Here, I'm sixty years old, I've lived here forever, I've never had anybody from census pulling the information for me.
Never filled out the form?
Never.
Never got the form?
Never.
What's going on?
Your own calendar?
Are you sure you're alive? Since nineteen ninety, I've lived.
So you're part of this...
Union Township.
You're part of the reason why we're short.
Well, I'm just saying, maybe the systems were wrong.
Well, I'm just, I'm fascinated, they couldn't find you, boy, they really work hard, if I, even in COVID, they, they worked really hard to find people. I, I remember in, in nineteen ninety, I, I, I didn't fill out the form, no, we got the long form, uh, during that year, they, they took our forms, I think, we got the long form, uh, I apologize, not nineteen ninety, two thousand, two thousand, uh, and I just didn't want to do it, you know, I don't think you do. And they started pastoring, and just made the nuisance of themselves until finally it's fine, hello.
I have, I have talked to census people on my security cameras, because they're knocking on your door persistently, and you're like, all right, I'm not there, but call me, you know, give them a phone number, so, yeah.
That's fascinating, it'll make you, you're, I'm sorry.
So the important, the important question, though, is, do you get the phone calls telling you that your auto warranty has expired? And this is your last opportunity to redo it? Because if you sell them, then it's probably worth being an anonymous person, but if you're still getting those, you might as well fill out the citation. Any other comments on this, I think there's, it's up to a good start, assuming... We'll see the other chapters as they roll off the presses.
It says action, do you need action on it?
Actually, the only action was really related to the survey, and I think we, we've got, we don't need a formal consensus.
Any other comments on the, on the documents? So then, let's see, where are we? We are at Extended Public Comment, so anyone who wants to address the Planning Commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not, may do so at this time, just give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit your comments to five minutes. Extended Public Comments open at eight, call it eight-thirty. Saying none, we'll go ahead and close that back up for another moment, and, uh, final board comment, any comments from board members?
Well, if this is truly my last meeting, it's been great working with all of you, and, uh, look forward to great things, so...
So, Mike, you have one more meeting, next Tuesday is the Sidewalk Committee, you are still Planning Commission representative, next week, figure?
I'll be there.
And I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but the planning act says that we continue to serve until your successor is...
I, I know, just to let you know, next week, la, next week's gonna be last week, you're gonna be able to get me for all of this.
Yeah.
Well, there's plenty of applicants, so it could be hard to fill four spots, right?
And when did you think you guys were meeting again?
It should be our next meeting.
For the Planning Commission?
Yeah, no, for board, because they'll name a successor for me.
Yeah, the next trustee meeting, well, one of the next two.
I would like to say it would be the next meeting, but...
Yeah, well, either, either way, I mean, there, there are two more meetings between, between now and the next planning commission meeting, so, yeah, I'm sure.
Well, I'm thinking sidewalks, pathways, but I'll be there.
No, you, you're gonna have us for, you gotta come in for Tuesday.
If this is, in fact, your last Planning Commission meeting, let me officially thank you for, uh, actually, I don't know how many years of service, but a significant period in this recent period, and then a lot of service earlier. I think you were coming off just as I was coming on, so probably more than ten years ago, so, uh, we've, we've appreciated having you, and it's been, uh, it's been fun, it's been a lot of, uh, a lot of tough issues and other things that we've dealt with, and you've always made, uh, good comments, and we're on a perspective that's been valuable, I think, and, uh, so, again, thank you.
And, and my, my term up is up as well as Commissioner Buckley, we officially have not been nominated yet, but, um, our applications are in. Don't know, but we'll find out here over the next month, so if this is our, this is my last meeting, thank you all.
If it's my last meeting, my wife will sigh, uh, sigh for leave.
Yeah.
I, I hope to see you guys again, but if not, absolutely, yeah.
Well, I, I thank you both as well, and I don't know what to say, I mean, I, I, I don't know how many applications there are, I don't know what's going through the supervisor's mind, so, but, uh, yeah, no, I think, you know, comments in the air, otherwise, I think we have a good board, and I think we've had a good, or commission, I think we've had a good commission for a while, and I think, uh, all of you have brought some... I think we've had a good commission for a while. I think, uh, all of you have brought something of importance to it. And, uh, I hope that I continue to get to work with all of you for a good long while. Except for Mike Easton. Any other board comments?
I believe there's seven applicants. I believe if I counted correctly, there's seven applicants.
So are.
Including these two?
Including these two.
Okay. For a total of, uh, three.
I believe there's four positions and we have seven applicants for four positions.
Well, that's right, yes. One, two, three, and then, uh, okay.
So in the spirit of Chicago politics, as a Chicago, please tell the trustees both early and often.
Yes.
Well, then we've completed our agenda, so we'll stand in adjournment until March, I guess it's going to be March fifteenth.
You wonder until when we're going there for a while.
I was like, there's no way.